You got to talk about it. You have to purge yourself. If there is something you want to say, this is the room to say it in.
That's right.
Not when you go down the street. Not when you talk to somebody else who didn't come today, who won't have the benefit of the knowledge that you have today. And so, with that in mind, we will start the conversation. We will start with, and if you have feelings today, you just need to put those feelings on the table. We will do it as positively as we can. There will be no muttering. There will be no negative speech. But you can say anything pleasantly. I can tell you to go wherever I want you to tell you to go. Wait a minute. So today, I want you to put your best foot forward to say whatever you want to say. But you want to say it really, really nice, alright? If you're saying, "I'm hurting from the James Byrd incident," you say, "I'm hurting from it. I'm scared of hurting from it. I'm mad. And I'll get over it next week, but I'm mad today." But, that's all, right? I just said that. So you shouldn't be mad anymore. Nobody can be mad, alright? Let's talk about where we are going from here to make this place better. Let's talk about jobs. Let's talk about good neighbors. Let's talk about events that bring us together. Let's talk about church events. Let's talk about things we can do. Let's talk about our schools, making our schools better. Let's talk about educating our kids to make them better. Sending them off to college so they can come back and build up Jasper. Making sure that every child has access to a good education. That we don't hold people back in that. Every parent in this room feels like they have an opportunity to send their kids to be better than they were on this day. On this day, in Jasper. June the 20th was the third, 2012. Moving forward, onward and upward. Now, you have a piece of paper in your hand for your questions. First, I want you to write them down if you have a question. That's therapeutic. It helps you to think about what you're going to say. You have a piece of paper. Everybody has one. Want you to write it down, what you're going to say. Even if you say it, I want you to write it down first. It's therapeutic to write it. Can't write it, get somebody to write it for you. Dictate it. Now, I had good conversation when I came into the room. Good conversation. What I say is, do we have a second turn? When we get to the end, do I talk about things we can do? Okay. Who do you want to answer this? Who do you want to answer this? Me. And if you don't know that... If he doesn't know that, I am not the person who's going to answer. I'm going to give you this question, and then you're going to... He said, "What is racism?" He doesn't know what racism is? It's different things to different people, but it's the discrimination of one person against another, or one group against another, judged based on... You're not discriminating until you make a decision to discriminate against me based on my race, my color, my ethnicity, my gender, my sexual orientation, or what, then you have to discriminate against me. You may not like me, but the minute you deny me for any one of those reasons, you have to discriminate. That's racism, alright? Any other questions? Okay, got your questions down. And now, we will start to ask our questions. Raise your hand up. Raise your hand if you would like to ask a question or if you would like to make a statement. I'm looking. Okay.
Number one, I have to leave early because I'm a caregiver. It's not that I don't want to stay through the care.
I understand caregiver.
I don't understand it. I think it's a negative effect for racism to continue to be brought up. My understanding is that Randy Sayers and Teria Northworthy were on a committee, and there were some guidelines that were not met, was the reason that Rodney Pearson was hired. That's all watering the bridge to me now. There have been so many actions. But, this is a beautiful town. Those who know me know I am for this town. I've been here since I was 17. I love this town. Did I graduate with you in '78, Mr. Diggle? I can't remember.
No, you graduated '78. You're probably my brother.
Your brother, okay.
I would have loved to have graduated in '78.
I couldn't remember because I was only here one year. But this is a beautiful town. This is a wonderful place. I just recently found out that the grief from a person whose child has committed something horrible, as in the Byrd murder, it's not the same kind of grief, but it is the same in that their grief and her greatest act that their child has done is just as horrible. That's something that we don't... I've never seen before until it just hit me in the face. We have to remember that there is grief everywhere in violence. We have to remember that most of us don't really care what color we are or what color our friends are. Teria and I have worked together, not really together, but we've worked doing the same thing just to make this town a wonderful place. And I never realized she was black any more than I realized mine was. We don't have to worry about what color we are if we treat each other as equals. I've said enough. I thank you for your time, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, will you state your name when you stand up? Everybody will know.
And I'm Patty Shaw.
Hi Patty. And she's right. Everybody is feeling the pain. The Byrd family, the family of the persons who committed the crime, the persons who... All of the relatives and... Everybody's hurting. So we have to remember that. That crime hurts everybody around it. It has an impact on all of our life, and that's why we are in this room today. Because it has an impact on... That's a good thing to recognize. I think we need to realize that. And I sometimes think that when criminals commit crime, we don't think about the impact it will have on somebody else's life. And that's one of the things that we need to do to teach them to be in our schools. Next question? Next comment?
My name is Ray Lewis. I know we're trying to bring healing to our town, but one of the biggest problems with healing taking place is that nobody can admit no wrong was done. It's hard to bring some healing. And I know where we're trying to go. I know how to get there, but there's a whole lot of people that don't know how to get there. First of all, people are in the now. And if we're going to bring the blacks and whites together, we're going to have to first come to some type of agreement that something wrong was done. And I want... I'm saying it this way to say this, because if... I don't know if I'm speaking from the majority of the blacks, but we really... I'm not just saying "we," because I'm the president of the Justice of Jasper. We feel that racism was done. We feel that way. Most of the white folks don't feel like no racism was done. They feel that they just made a decision based upon all this other stuff they're saying. But until we can come to an agreement, or we can all just say, "No, it didn't happen," there's a lot of... We can either say, "Go on, but you're not Willie, you're not Teria, you're not all those people who named," like they all loose in the head, mouths feeding them. They got to live with that for the rest of their life, and their children got to live with that. But that's neither here nor there. And my understanding is, I've worked on a job then. I felt I should have been promoted to the job, but I wasn't promoted. And I had to live with that. But why are you sending the person that was promoted through all the hell that y'all sent them through when the people that hired them gave them the job? Why... How is that right? You let the person that was given a job, you don't send him through hell and high water, and then y'all come back a year later and say, "Y'all get over it." That sounds... To me, that sounds like it is. Maybe I'm the only radical in here. I don't know. But my deal is, where was the town hall meeting a year ago? Where was the town hall meeting a year ago? And that's sort of my... I'm not saying it's too late and we got to move forward, but I'm trying to help people every day to move forward because they ain't done nothing to me. I'm not worried about them, you know? But there's other people that have been damaged. The community has been damaged. And then people throw things up in our face. We just come here, and I'm going to say this to the blacks and whites, a lot of y'all throw mixed emotions to us. Y'all say one thing. Y'all come together in front of these folks and say another thing. We don't know how to take y'all. And y'all... Some of y'all saying that it's a Judas and the bunch, and you keep the front that's saying that Judas and the bunch is a Judas. So I'm purging myself. Okay, you just said... We've been hypocritical with all this stuff. And we got... If we want to all be hypocrites and go forward, and that's what it takes to do, let's do it. But I'm getting what I need to get off my chest, and that's why I'll be through. And I don't need to be a part of the Justice of Jasper or nothing else anymore. I just want to state my opinion because there's a lot of things... It's bigger than y'all think it is. We think it... Okay, also, we went through the formality of having a call meeting. We already knew that Chief Pearson was going to be fired. Why we went through all the process of that? Okay? Not only did we already hear that, that's why everybody was there. Okay, why just play with us? And then, why the ex-officer, right now, three weeks ago, the rumor in the streets, all of them going to have their job back? Okay, is that going to happen? Don't play with us. Just if that's what you're going to do, do what you're going to do, but don't stir the water up and then say, "Y'all get over it." And I'm different. I may be the only radical in the way, but I'm personally... I'm not being hypocri... I'm purging myself now. So when I leave this meeting, I'll be through with this, and I can get what I need to get. But we got a lot of people in this town that's hurting. And we saying just... Sort of, to me, it's like, we got to move forward. We know we got to move forward, but there's no admission. There's nobody admitting anything. And listen, our understanding is wrong. And maybe my understanding is wrong. I see things differently than all people. I'm going to make the point that Councilmember Austin Scott say, "If I ever seen... If I've never seen racism, and I dealt with it all my life, on jobs and everything, I seen it at the house." And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Do what y'all want to do. We can go forward. I'm purging now. I don't even need to talk no more. So nobody don't have to worry about where I'm coming from. I'm not a hypocrite. I'm real. A lot of people talking behind different things and buddy-buddy with folks. I'm not like that. I'm just going to voice my opinion. We come in... A lot of us come here like, "What is this all about?" You know, all the stuff that's been done, we have to get over it and go on. And maybe if that's what we need to do, let's get over it and get on. But ain't nobody admitting no wrong was done. You know, I'm not even saying the hiring of Rodney Pearson was done the right way. I'm not even agreeing with that. Okay, they didn't agree with that? They recalled him. That should have... That satisfied them. They had a right to recall. There were a whole lot of sheets before Rodney Pearson that we didn't agree with. We had a right to recall, but we didn't try to recall. But it is what it is. We can do what we need to do. The town needs to heal. I agree with that 100%. But it's kind of hard right now, y'all. And it's kind of hard with a lot of folks that we kind of need therapy. We need counseling. We need somebody to come here and talk to us and tell us how... I know how. I know how to let go. You can... Forgiveness is, even if you're not wrong, you can still ask for forgiveness, even if you're not wrong. But ain't nobody asking for no forgiveness. Ain't nobody saying... They don't even have to agree that we were wrong or not. But still, even if you want to heal it, you still have to say, "Forgive me." I've been to people before that I knew I didn't do no wrong to them just to build my relationship back. I went to them and said that I was sorry, even though I felt I did... The wrong was done to me. That's the Bible way. But nobody's saying nothing. And so, you know, it could... All of this could have been handled in a different way. We hear where we at now. And that's... We got to make a decision to go forward.
Thank you. And I heard a lot of voices saying, "Yes, agree with that." But I heard him talk about several things, and I tried to write each one of them down. First, he said, "Nobody is admitting to a wrong." We have to think about... Certainly, we do have to think about the first wrong that we've been in. I hope you're talking about the James Byrd case. That was the first wrong that you're talking about. Then we talked about the Chief Pearson recall election. Then all of them. Then we talked about... He talked about his income was on the job, being passed over for racism. And then he... But let's just talk. There will be people who are not in this room today who did not hear what you said. So we can't feel it today, can we? We cannot feel it today. There will be people who will be better, who will speak... But we cannot speak for every person in this room. Are there any more James Byrd killers out there? Who knows? Who knows? Okay, and you're absolutely right. The only thing that we can do is, when you say, "Nobody's admitting guilt," is what did the court say? What did the court say?
No, I want to clarify that. We... I'm not even talking about the James Byrd. I'm talking about the way everything was done at the city hall. The city councilor, they have the authority. They didn't even have to go through that process that they went through. They have a right to appoint the person if they wanted to without... This was the first time in the history of Jasper that they ever went through all this process. But I'm not... I'm not even talking about that. The main thing about the James Byrd incident is that when all this was going up, it was just kind of a slap in the face to throw James Byrd in our face. And there were people that threw... That said to us, and I have copies of it off Facebook, said to us, "If we think that the James Byrd incident was something, wait and see." That's throwing things back up in our face. They made it become a racial issue. We didn't.
Are those people here?
That's true.
Are all those people here in this room?
Well, if it... You can put on record, not, but I may be misquoting it. But I think that it came off of Julie Hall's Facebook page, which is the captain's wife. You can put that on there. And then, you know, that... She made a comment, and that's like a slap in our face. If it didn't anger nobody, it anger me. That was not necessary. That's right.
So I think we need... That is... The captain's wife, we need to deal with that. There will always be people out there who will do that. You know, and there will always be... There will always be racism. Well, I got some... Wait a minute. Hold on a minute. I want... He had three or four things that he wanted to deal with. And so, he got along with them things, and I don't want him to go away because he's full, he's purging. I want him to feel purged. Yes, I want him to feel purged. So tomorrow morning, he's in the pulpit. You can purge and help somebody else purge, alright? Because I think your community thinks of you as a leader. And so, we want you to really... They probably expected you to say what you're saying. And so, you're speaking for a lot of people. Ministers have a lot of clout in the black community. And so, thank you for saying what you had to say today. Let me... We talked about the courts, and that was not... One of the things that you rely on when all else is said is what did the court say about the James Byrd incident. Let me talk about it, because I think that's prevalent right now. And I think that's a contempt. It's in this room, the Pearson case, right? Somebody's going to get to it, right? And so, it was... I think, what I heard is that it was a recall election, right? Election, which means it went out to a vote of the what? People. It went out to a vote of the people. Nobody took the right to say, "We are pulling you off, and we're putting somebody else on." It went out to a vote of people. And everybody in this room had a say, am I right? With your vote, right?
That's right.
Okay. When the vote goes out to the people, and I'm a person who gets elected every two years, and the people have spoken, right? The people have spoken. I want you, right here in this room, to say, "Did you go vote?" "Did you help Mr. Pearson in his campaign?" "Did you campaign? Did you give him?"
I think you were on track.
Alright. Yeah, well, okay, give me the word. It was a recall election, though, wasn't it?
It was a recall election to city council.
Huh? Okay.
It was a recall vote, Mr. Pearson.
Okay. Okay. So correct me on what you were talking about.
The recall was of the council members in the...
Okay, because you had so many, I got them mixed up.
The recall was of the council members who voted to hire.
Alright. And the chief is appointed by the...
By the council.
By the council. And the council replaced them, right?
The new president.
The present governor. Alright. Then let's go back to the election, recall election. Let those questions still stand, okay? Did we help in the recall election? Because that was our call to the people, right? So we have to think about what we did in terms of that, because when they put it out to the people, you have to go and vote. Am I right?
That's right.
So, questions stand on the recall election. Did you go and vote? Did you help in the campaign? Did you donate money in the campaign? Did you call up your friends and neighbors? I'm talking to everybody. Some of us are saying yes, and some of us have not moved. So you need to think individually. I'm not blaming anybody. Everybody need to think individually about where they were in that campaign and what contributions you made. Did you take people to the poll? Did you help register people to vote? Were you as active as you could have been? Did you drag everybody you knew to the poll? Now, let me think. When you go to a vote of the people, the people have spoken, that's a new issue as far as I'm concerned. I think... Am I right on that?
Yeah, it's a...
Alright. Now, I don't know why the Chief Pearson was let go, and the council did that. Now, I don't know the history behind that. Somebody's going to inform me in a minute about that so I can address each one of that. Or any one of those issues. I also heard you say, Reverend, you talked about one issue where you were passed over for a job, okay? I think all of us have done that.
It's not going to ever happen.
Yes. I was about to say that. When God closes one door, he opens another. And then at the end, when he says, "No," sometimes, he's getting you ready for something better. And so, every door that closes to you is not a negative. Sometimes, I met lots of doors close to me that were positive. And so, you end up in a better place. And so, don't take every... And yes, we've been there on the job where we've had to help other people who got hired over us. And so, we're not going to take each one of our no's personally. I heard... I think I've semi-covered yours. I don't think I covered everything you said. But you're okay? May I hear from this lady?
Okay now.
You're okay now? Okay. Now, I will hear from you again.
The question was for him.
Yes.
The issues that I brought up are the fact that before the city council, during that, voted to take people off the council, there were some actions that were explained to me that were not about racism. They were about the actions of Randy Sayers and Teria Northworthy. And if there was another person on that committee... And this was what was explained to me, that there was two people on the committee, maybe another one. Mike or Teria could answer this question.
I was appointed to that committee.
Okay, you were there?
I was appointed to that committee.
Can we find out how that worked out to where we ended up with Mr. Pearson? That's why I said, "Why was it a racial issue?" They were working within the means of the city council. There was things done that a lot of people didn't approve of. But I don't know how it came about other than I heard about it later that it was a big to-do. And I would like to know how it came about that he was... Other than he was brought before the city council and the other teams.
Is there anyone who has the expertise in this room to answer? I just made a...
I would just say, the council, based on the council's decision, pick who they wanted and they leave.
Okay. That's fair.
I hear a hint of...
Could I... It was a... Ask the person there?
I'm sorry. The lady is standing. And then you're next, okay?
Okay, my name is Karen Adams. And I'm sitting here thinking that this meeting is all about trying to heal and get on one accord with blacks and whites. And I want to know, how can we do this if our mayor is entertaining a Facebook page that's causing a lot of controversy? The comments and different things on that Facebook. I don't go on Facebook. I get calls pronounced everywhere else saying they're going to read these pages. I think that should be stopped. That keeps up a whole lot of mess in this city. That Facebook page with all these different comments. Everybody has a different opinion. Nobody has the same opinion. But when it's so negative, why publicize it? When you do it like that? KJS, Facebook page. Michael.
I would be glad to address that.
Yes. Because by you... Let me finish. Because by you being the mayor, when you let these people get on your KJS Facebook page, it's making the whole community look bad. The whole city look bad. It makes you look bad because you entertaining stuff that's not pleasant.
Okay, let me address that. KJS has a Facebook page. Jasper Newsboy has a Facebook page. Boon Enterprise has a Facebook page. Channel 6 has a Facebook page. The other radio station has a Facebook page. The Lucky W's has a Facebook page. Houston Croft has a Facebook page. Everybody has a Facebook page. And so, why is KJS not?
Well, because you think the law is on this. There's some that's on that.
No ma'am, we don't. If they... Everybody in this room has their right to have their opinion, okay? Just like everybody, if you're writing their letter to the editor of the Newsboy, you have their right to have their opinion. Jimmy Galvin over here with James, the editor of the Newsboy. Jimmy, how many letters? Is there being... Would be a letter to the editor if you cheated the freedom? Huh? But it's your duty as reporter to allow that place to be put to the right?
As long as they meet requirements.
Yes, now, any kind of... Any kind of racial things or something like that, a headline or something is on KJS. It is it in front of you. There's been people that got on Facebook and said, "I'm the worst mayor that there's ever been in Kansas." I don't take that down right there because that's their right to say it, okay? There's people on there that say, "I have been the worst thing that's ever happened to Jasper on that page." That's their right to say it, okay? Now, so, we're going to continue to have a Facebook page. We're going to continue to allow people to have a free flow to follow. And we're not going to make it that. Because what if I went in there and took away the opinions? Let's say I went in there and took away the opinions that I disagree with, okay? Now, that would be unfair to people we call sensitive. Now, let me go and understand. I want to clarify something. I'm not a Facebook person. I never read Facebook. I never looked at it. I personally have a Facebook page that my friend and the river's girlfriend set up. And she's all in love. She has pictures of me and her boyfriend and us doing things and all kinds of... Our friends and stuff on there. Today, as I speak to you, I personally have never... And I know that this is going to be hard to achieve within 2002. I'm a ham radio operator. When I was 15 years old, I was a radio jockey on the other side of the world on Marsh Coast. So this catch eating everything, I would do it for anybody to hear. But I, this day, never host anything on Facebook, name my thing. Even though I make news, hosting all kinds of stuff. Cherry and Jane, I testify, I never quote what I believe. uh, Cherokee Jane, I testify, never before, I've never been on Facebook. I, I KJS, uh, Facebook page. We have so much responsibility, maintain it.
Okay, so in other words, Facebook page will go on with all the negative comments and different things and different things.
It will go on with people's right to say that.
I pray that even though it advise the city or not. Yes, just the man. That's what I'm going to do. I think the category of Facebook is freedom of speech, right? Am I right? Now, this is what you, what we need to do. Uh, if you, if you are a person who has Facebook, put a nice positive speech on it. And you say, I beg to disagree with you. Then, yes, blah, blah, blah. So how many of you have written something positive on your Facebook? If you write, if you deal with Facebook? If you have written something positive and you have something that somebody has something negative and racist on it, you have a right to respond to that. You can say, I am a citizen in, in, in Jasper, Texas. I enjoy living in, whatever the response is. Remember I said it's up to you to say the positive things about your city? You just can't say, well, they said, uh, blah, blah, blah about me and I didn't respond. You can respond with something positive. And, many of you ought to just get on there and just write something positive about Jasper. All right? That's what the Facebook is there for. He's writing, everybody has a Facebook. I have one. Every once in a while, they say something nasty about me, I say, thank you. Say my name, say my name. And so, you need to write something back positive. How can you do, how many of you promise to do that? Okay, that you will write something positive, all right? How many of you will get your children to write something positive since you can't use Facebook? All right?
Could I say something?
Okay, yes, and then why you there?
I would invite anyone who, you know, KJS's Facebook page and say that I'm the worst mayor that there's ever been. But don't call, don't get on there and lose anything, okay?
No, don't get there.
Or don't say anything about my children or my mother or my friends.
Remember I said you can't say anything nice?
Say, just, just say that I'm the worst mayor that there's ever been on Facebook. That is not next, that's your top. And you have the right to share. Please don't say anything about somebody's family or children or brother or family.
Okay, Mayor, would you like to answer this question? Look at over there. And the gentleman, the gentleman over here has a comment. Oh, he had a comment when she was standing. Okay, right.
Madam Chairman and other Dick, uh, thank you for, thank you for commenting. I know how good you felt in the past. You trapped me in there, I, I passed it, I stayed here. Just some idea. Let me say this, I think what Sister Adam is saying relative to Facebook, there's certain things I can do. I'm a preacher and they don't expect me to be at the vote. Now, just, just don't. It would be in California within the next five minutes. If Reverend Hardy won $25,000 at the vote. And I think that's what Sister Adam was saying. There's certain things, after you get a certain position, that they don't expect you to do. There's certain things that, that you just, as a teacher, I couldn't even go to the liquor store and I wasn't preaching to them. And I, I might go throw it that time. Somebody told me all the killing that went out. I still, that's what I liked. But I couldn't even go to the liquor store. If I did, I had to drive out of town. And when I got there, most of my members were there. I think one of the main things, and I had to look up the word, I heard it, was the word malfeasance. And I told Sister Lord, was it, that's the worst I've ever seen anybody say about anybody. That mean that the rest of her life, she has to live with the word malfeasance. Now, if you never heard nothing good, say it. Don't read that, because it sure ain't nothing good. All that that they said about Terry, a Terry, fine woman, just as fine as you'll meet within, within the United States. And you gonna say she done everything wrong, that, and, and then pass it out? Now, we didn't vote. They hardly vote, vote. Terry got beat by three of them somewhere. Anybody that didn't, didn't vote in this room, you step outside. I got a bad feeling, I'm trying my best to whoop. It's a shame. She get beat, and then it's a shame. We got beat in our own district.
There you go.
My three votes. Ain't no need to you say nothing if you didn't vote, you ain't got nothing to say. And that's right in. Let me go with this. Let's come together. The old folk, Mr. Gosbridge, Mr. Jack Martindale, Mr. Stewart, John Henry Mitchell, and all those sit around at Henderson Road at Truck Car. And they set more policy